I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Six oh five, seven oh five. Okay, today is June the sixth, two thousand sixteen, time is seven oh five. And the regular meeting that Greensburg City Council has called the order. At this time, please silence electronics devices. Okay, roll call, please.
Mariana McKenzie, here. Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Jamie Kane, here. Daryl Polling.
Here.
And Darren Covington, out.
Okay, thank you. I need to have the minutes approved for May the second, two thousand sixteen. Did everybody receive those in their packets? Did everybody get to go over and see if there's any corrections?
Make motion we pass the minutes as submitted.
Okay, we've got a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Jamie, second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Old business, none. New business. We're talking about ordinance. Reading ordinance, first reading on ordinance twenty sixteen dash ten, which be amended ordinance nineteen ninety-six dash three fees for audio and video copy. Chief Bridges, please.
I'm gonna keep this short for Mr. Polling. Just bringing this in front of everybody. Again, this is the ordinance for the police fees that I've brought to both the Board of Works and Council, just raising the fee, or adding fees of fifteen dollars for video recordings, ten dollars for audio recordings, and then photos for five dollars, which will be added into an existing ordinance fee that goes into the law enforcement continuing fund, so that's what this is.
Okay, did everybody get a copy of that? There may be down the road, we may wanna cut the cost of the video and the audio. Because it is with the process is that we would probably have an officer go through it, right? And so the officers won't be taken, would have to be off the road or something, or probably put through this project plus presented to the people at the time. But this is such a new item, so we thought we'd better bring police and charges with it. Okay? Any other questions? I need, we'd like to have a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty sixteen dash ten, the first reading. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. First reading's passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have upon the first reading, the ordinance twenty sixteen dash nine, establishing the policy. Is this that, what we talked about, actually, the?
Yeah, it's the materiality policy, which is the second part.
Of the?
Well, it's the first part, because there's two parts to it.
Okay, there's two parts, and this is that?
The internal controls.
Yeah, the internal control thing going on. Do you wanna discuss this, actually, a little bit?
So basically, state board accounts is putting into place that we have to have passed by June thirtieth, an internal control standards, which we're gonna be taking some training over it, because everyone within City Hall will have to have training to get a better understanding of this policy. But what it's basically stating is, we set a limit of two hundred dollars, that whether someone walks out, you know, with a computer or cash, or we're not balancing monthly, whatever, it has to be turned into state board accounts. So, one part of it is to set the materiality policy, which is that two hundred dollars. And then the other part of it, the ordinance twenty sixteen eleven, is basically stating that we will do, we'll have training, and we will follow the state board accounts policies.
Okay.
Did you say we set that, that now two hundred, or is that mandated by the state board accounts?
Well, I spoke with them, and they said that for most cities are sized anywhere from one to five hundred. So, we got two, was, you know, and that's something that if it's not, it can always be changed. They're kind of a happy medium, not the hard way.
And, and the other questions? It's first part. Okay, I entertain a motion on first reading of ordinance twenty sixteen dash nine. Some move. Adam, second?
Second. Before we vote, I just, I mean, how, how many times have we had a cash loss of two hundred dollars, recurring cash loss of two hundred dollars? I mean, how many, I mean, we don't even check when we see how many times we've been, because I'm not, I'm not aware of it, so otherwise we.
No. We haven't been audited, you know, for quite a while. I mean, not at our, to our knowledge, to say, as soon as I walk out of the world with two hundred dollars in my pocket, you know. But, you know, there's lots of things that we have to do internally, as far as like banker insiliations. That's another example, if we were ever off, you know, two hundred dollars or more, and it could not be found, we would have to turn that in. So there's, there's, from my understanding of it at this point, there's lots of different ways that they mean two hundred dollars. Not always necessarily, you know, cash in hand, but anything taken from, and this is like city, citywide. Like the street department, the fire department, the police department, everybody will have to be trained.
So anything, uh, you can turn over dollars, not necessarily just, okay?
Any asset, any, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Passes. On the first reading of two thousand sixteen eleven internal control standards, is the second part of this?
And that was basically in there with what I explained, it's just that we will follow the state board accounts policies to make sure that everyone's trained accordingly.
Okay.
And that we will turn in anything that we have. But these are the two that have to be set by June thirtieth. So we're gonna try to.
Oh.
I'll, I'll make a motion, please suspend the rules on two thousand sixteen dash nine.
We need a motion to pass this.
Well, we're on two thousand eleven dash nine for a.
Oh, we can still go back against the nine. Sure. Sorry.
I'm just trying to help.
No, you did guess. So, we're looking at the second read, suspended rules on the second reading of ordinance twenty sixteen dash nine. Yeah, have a motion. And so, I have a, a motion on floor to suspend the rules plus adopt this, uh, a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is on the twenty sixteen dash nine. Now, the first reading of ordinance twenty sixteen. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion when passed the second, or twenty, twenty sixteen dash nine on the second reading.
Oh, I thought we just did that.
We just suspended the rules.
Good point.
It's just procedure.
You're right, it's just procedure. Don't question Jamie on this, he's the master of spending rules. Don't even go there, Mayor.
Well, I would've been there six months, so. So, on the second reading of ordinance twenty sixteen dash nine. Leave a motion.
I got a motion.
Okay, you got the motion, you got the second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Jamie. Okay, let's see if we can do this next one. Okay, now, on the first reading of ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven internal control standards. Any questions? I need a motion first, I guess. Or you got any questions for responding to this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Make a motion, I need a second to the first reading of ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven. Okay, we have a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, I need to go.
Make a motion, we suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules on the ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven. I have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion, we pass twenty sixteen dash eleven on second reading.
Okay, any discussion? I got a, a motion, I need a second. Got a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. Well, definitely get through that, we got, thank you. Thank you, uh, thank Jamie. Okay, next information here is tax abatement renewals. These are renewals, and we had the tax abatement group. Jamie, Glenn Tebby, and Mark Coughlin, and Mariana McKenzie is on the board, she was out of town. So, the other four of us met, and Sarah was here, she kinda guided us through this process. So, did, is there a packet in front of you guys over there?
There is right here, do you guys have one for sure?
Okay, good, okay. And what we did is, we went through all these and made sure that they had whatever they're supposed to be doing, if they hired more people, or that they had to, you know, go pass. So, basically, do we have to have a motion ourselves on this?
Yeah, well, we could either do a second, I, I would make the motion that we pass them, or we approve them all. Basically, the, the tax abatements for renewals that are listed in your ordinance, or listed on your agenda tonight, and we pass those. These were all just, we found them to be compliant with what they were asking, they're all renewals, none of them were new.
Oh, correct, do you wanna read those off?
Sure. I go, the first one I have is Hampton Inn, Top Flight Athletics.
Can you read the number on the page?
I couldn't.
That might be better.
The parcel number?
Was it the twenty, two thousand seven dash four, is that the one for the Hampton Inn? Two thousand seven dash four for the.
Hold down the box, I see it now, okay, yeah, correct. Okay, two thousand dash seven, dash eight for Hampton Inn. On Top Flight Athletics, it's two thousand fifteen dash six. Okay, this is Tree City Village LP, Resolution twenty twelve dash seven. This is Tree City Estates, twenty oh seven, dash three. K-Fab, twenty twelve dash four. Mets Two E, twenty zero seven, dash sixteen. Fusion Products, twenty fourteen dash two. Nice Long Nails, two thousand fourteen dash three. Honda Manufacturing of Indiana, twenty zero seven, dash nineteen, two thousand seven, nineteen. Greensburg Commercial Warehousing, is twenty fifteen, dash twelve. And I have a second, Greensburg Commercial Warehousing and Caponeers, two thousand fifteen, dash thirteen. We have G-Com, which is Resolution twenty eleven, dash twelve. G-Com Resolution twenty thirteen, dash twelve, or ten, I'm sorry, dash ten. G-Com, twenty fifteen, dash three. G-Com, twenty thirteen, dash six. This is Atati, twenty zero six, dash eleven. Atati Power Powder Metals, twenty eleven, dash nine. Atati Powder, twenty eleven, dash nine.
I think it was one on personal property and one on.
Business on the bill, that's right. Yep. Another, Atati Powder, twenty twelve, dash six. Atati Powder, twenty twelve, dash six. Atati, twenty thirteen, nine. And twenty thirteen, nine again. And that's what we have, we do have a few more that we didn't find that was complete, so we sent them back, so we can get clarification on for, what else, you know, needs to be done. So hopefully next meeting we will have that.
Looks like several of these are about completion.
Yeah, getting close.
I think there were a couple that were, this was the last year they could fire.
Yeah.
Several two thousand sevens, and then one two thousand six there.
So, do I need a motion?
I need a motion.
You made the motion, I need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions, guys? I, I wanna thank them all for being there, and we took a couple hours to go through all this stuff. So, we made a big time. So, so.
So, I'll make a motion, yes.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. So passed. Okay. Well, Mr. Polling, we are up to you, or down to you.
We got it right, second. Board of Works' agenda tonight included Andrew McKee asking for the same route to be approved for the Fourth of July parade that was approved, be at ten a.m. on the fourth. Lou Capperin from Tiki Bar was on the agenda, he was not present. Chief Garrett Key asking for approval for disposal of equipment, generator, which will be scrapped, salvaged, and then the old hose that will be donated to add to fire department if they so desire to accept it. Fire, he also talked about the, brought the fire protection contract for Delta RMC, and Shigal, KS, Sims Falls, and those were all signed and approved. Brendan Bridges King, asking for a few things here. Asked that we do an extended warranty on the cameras, the police wear, and the reason for the extended warranty request is that they have had several issues with those cameras and had to send them back for repairs, and the Board of Works felt that it was a frugal thing to do to go ahead and extend that warranty for six thousand one, six thousand eighty dollars. Also, and this is for a two-year extended warranty, also approved was to purchase eight laptops for ten thousand dollars for the older laptops that will be, these will replace, will be passed on to the fire department. And, let's see, firearms. Request to purchase firearms, the ones that you have are, you say, twelve years old? And he does have enough money in his L-E-C-A, L-E-C-E fund, and drug seizure money to cover the cost of firearms, holsters, things that go with that. Equipment for the bike patrol is all in, it was all paid for with grants, and we're excited about that program getting underway. Also discussed that the school system is interested in adding an additional resource officer, and we're hoping that the grant will come through on that, the grant comes through, virtually will be paid for by the grant, and we'll also be adding that one more officer force. And then we're going to have interviews for new policemen, and that will be next Tuesday. Last thing on the agenda was the, was whole campus and Rob Duckworth asked for permission for the Fourth, uh, Four-H Show Fair Parade on July tenth. Permission was granted on that, thank you. Questions?
You said the school resource officer grant.
Everybody's thinking on that a little bit.
We're hoping next week, or the next week, we were told, first couple weeks in June, we should hopefully hear something if we get that grant.
You know, we know how long the grant would be for?
One year.
Cool.
But you can't keep reapplying four year after year, so it's just not a one time. Like I said, hopefully we can get that grant more than once.
Well, the school system is, is, you know, we get this new year, and basically they're, they're looking at maybe extend this, seeing how it works, and they're considering in there, so I think it's very positive that they're gonna be setting in the new year. So.
My, my only concern would be, how do you pay for it after a year?
Well.
I think the last one was, was a four-year grant, I think your last, four?
Three.
So, well, we'll burn that out, it's what we do a lot of stuff, but we have, I want you to be informed that we're applying, or the schools applying, or not to say we're at the school. So, basically, the resource officer will be, he'll perform, he'll be working the summer, on the streets during the summer, when he's not up there. If, you know, if we need to have him work in the streets, he'll be there working the streets, so. It's kind of an opportunity to get some more of our officers down to the younger age. Bruce has died up on everything, and so this way he will be stationed, basically, with junior helping. As long as we have those guys. So.
Mayor, I should've brought this to everyone's attention earlier, but I actually have an amendment to some meetings that I have minutes from, a special meeting. And I hope everybody got received, but they'll have to be signed also, I wonder what all that works.
They got a motion on that, or?
I think we have amendments for the last.
Okay, so they just get to be signed, yeah? Okay.
And then a special meeting?
Okay. So, we have minutes from May thirty first, two thousand sixteen, when we had the special meeting for, to discuss wheel tax, or wheel and surtax at that time. Did everybody get a copy of this? Does it say it's an email?
Yeah, it's an email.
Okay, is there any corrections to that? Do you know?
I can see them.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the minutes from the special council meeting on May thirty first, two thousand sixteen.
I made a motion to accept the minutes from May thirty special meeting.
Thank you, need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Also, there's a couple things we talked about, again, in the summer time, everybody's mowing the grass, they need to be aware of glass grass, clippings going into the streets, and then going down to the sewer. We get a lot of clogged, issue, uh, city streets when the rain's real heavy. So please remember not to blow the grass out in the streets, if you do, blow it back in, back in your yard. Be the nice thing. It also makes it look nicer. Also, we remind you to, if you have needles, please go to the Board of Health, or to the Solid Waste, and they'll give you a free Sharps container to put the needles in. Couple weeks, we had one of our guys, workers, who stuck a needle out the bag. So, it's really important that we put our needles and dispose of them real proper, instead of just sticking them in a bag and going on, so. Those things don't cost anything, you know, we get you to do it when you feel it, and you fill her up to the line, and then you can go get another one. So, I remind you on that. Also, we talked about parking, and no parking areas, and parking on the wrong side of the street. I instructed my officers with the chief to start writing tickets. So we need to kind of clean ourselves up, we've kind of been lax here for a month or so, so I wanna remind you of that. Also, we're in production with the Y M C A. They got a summer, summer feed, food program, is they feed the kids during the summer. And we will be one of the sites, starting Monday here, they'll be coming out in the back of the building by the training area. So they'll be serving lunches here from twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five, so. Something that they, they, they go out throughout the city, I think there's ten or twelve spots. And so we've been asked to, to get involved, and I thought it's a good project, so. That's the summer program. Anybody have any questions?
Maybe two comments, or any more suggestions? I haven't heard much about the Dana lately, so. I haven't heard much about the dam lately, so, I don't know where we're at with that, or...
Basically, where we're at on the dam is, uh, we're, we're waiting for the report. And, and the report is being, and I think we got another month before we hear anything, I think. Then, so, essentially, we take three months or so, uh, on there, so, uh...
I've seen some signs that they're working on their evaluation.
So, we hopefully in the next couple months will hear something, but it'd be nice, uh, to hear something.
And, I, I know we talked about this in the past, I think briefly brought it up, uh, earlier this year, but I don't know, maybe the next couple months sometime, Mark, we can review, or maybe we wait till budget time to talk about it, but we talked about bringing in toques, toques, instead of picking up a trash can. You gotta at least look at it if you're out on it, maybe, maybe budget time's the better time to talk about that.
Well, I agree, it, it is in my proposed budget. And, and what I'm doing is, uh, also, Brittany was getting surprises, uh, so I hope the rest, in this week, I'll have surprises so I can bring you up and, and say this is what it's gonna cost and, and all that. But yeah, we're moving forward, I've kinda pushed her up a little bit after we got another guy stacked, so, this is not a good situation, and, uh... So, that's where we're at on those. Okay, good job.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Well, and also, we're talking about the fire station, uh, engineers have it, uh, we're doing it. I just talked to the head guy the other day, he, we're gonna start, uh, he's gonna start talking with me every week and tell me how far they are, and hopefully in the next two, three weeks, we'll be able to put up some bids, uh, for the station at the police department, so... Keep our fingers crossed, if you can, 'cause I keep calling and pushing, I wanna get this done, so, we'll do that, so... Anything else?
Yeah, just a couple comments there, in regards to the fire station, I just feedback, everybody I've talked to been positive feedback about the plans for adding a fire station over there, so, I notice that. Another item, in regards to recent lower purchase by the city, I would like to think that in the future that when the cities indeed have goods and services that they would like to, they would give the local businesses opportunities to quote on those, if possible. In that particular case, there was a local tax paying business that was not getting the opportunity to quote on those, I suppose.
Right. Well, I think that the problem, uh, with the one is that we knew how the one worked and how it, uh, and we did buy a couple of them, I just say.
Right, but you didn't give us a local city paying business the opportunity to quote on it.
Okay, well, it probably is the one that we decided we didn't want, because it didn't ride well on the side of the...
I'll have a comment for that too.
Okay.
Because, yes, there was a desire by somebody to not have something that was orange, but what they would quote would have been a code.
Right.
So, I'll let that be that.
Okay, I'll take it, thanks, sir. I apologize, but we will try to do better next time. No problem.
That is something that I think is important, Kevin, and it is brought up, any time we big bits on Board of Works, it is brought up, that we really need to look closely at, be very careful. I'll, I'll go with Dan, we'll, we'll take a closer look at that.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anything else? Anything from the outside in the audience? Okay, so, that's all I have for the night. Okay, second?